...Commissioner's Work Session, February 13th. We'll call this meeting to order. At this time, we'd like to have mass foreclosure presentation by, used to be a city attorney assistant, now the attorney, Steve Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity to give you a little bit of a rundown on our next mass foreclosure. This is that particular time of year when the city is looking at collecting its taxes, and we come up with the delinquent tax list, which is the first aspect of...I'm sorry?
This has nothing to do with the Catholic Church, right?
I'm sorry.
It has nothing to do with the Catholic Church?
No, sir, nothing to do with the Catholic Church. But basically, I just wanted to give you all a rundown of the particular process of the mass foreclosure. As indicated a minute ago, the first thing that we do, the legal department does, is that we do take a look at the delinquent tax list. And one of the things that, tools that we have available to local governments is the mass foreclosure statute that basically permits us to file one foreclosure action and name a number of different properties in that. What we normally do is that we identify the delinquents, and we will send a letter to each person that is on the delinquent property list. You know, basically, the folks that are not paying the taxes are, you know, everybody that is paying taxes is carrying the burden for those that aren't paying, like that. And so, you know, we try to put them on notice that we are in the process of coming up with a list for the mass foreclosure. Lot of times, we get comments, our finance department, that, "Well, we didn't think that you all would try to collect this until two or three years had passed." And we explained that, "No, we're always looking at everyone."
Off of that one, did you?
Yeah. But anyway, we sent out our first batch of letters to the delinquent property tax, delinquent taxpayers, and sent those out Friday, and this morning, had one person that came in and paid $2,064.12 for taxes from 2011 through 2017. So that gives you kind of an idea of the effect of the letters that we send. You know, we do try to emphasize to them that, you know, we're going to collect the taxes, we're going to collect penalties, interest, advertisement, and if we have to file a foreclosure, we're going to collect our attorney's fees on that as well. So normally, once we send out the letters, we do get some response, and folks that want to come in and make arrangements. Second aspect of the mass foreclosure list is to look at our, not delinquent, but our property maintenance expenses. As you all know, there's a number of properties in the city that are abandoned and not kept up by, you know, the owner of that property. You know, what we run into a lot of times is that the property is belonged to somebody that has passed away several years ago. No estate was ever settled. If we can find relatives, a lot of times, they don't want anything to do with it. But the city still, we receive complaints from folks that are neighbors. We go out, a lot of times have to mow and board up windows and doors, and a lot of times, we even, you know, demolish the property depending on the condition that it's in. And so, you know, this aspect of it, we also take a look at it in addressing who and what's going to be on the mass foreclosure list. Ultimately, we will come up with a list of about 40 properties. And the way that we do this, we look primarily first at the most money that is owed to the city. When it comes to the dilapidated properties, we try to look at those that are in the worst condition, you know, and, you know, if we've spent money tearing that down. We'll come up with a list of about 40 properties, and we will forward that list to our outside legal counsel, who will file the petition, petition for foreclosure. Before that's done, a title opinion will be done on all of the properties, so that all interested parties, anybody that has a lien against the property, a mortgage or anything of that sort, can be notified as well to come forward in a certain interest that they might have in it.
Do they have to get an attorney to do this as well?
I'm sorry?
Do they have to get an attorney to do this as well?
They don't have to. Folks can represent themselves.
What do you find, more often than not, they just represent themselves?
Well, when, yeah, most of the time. When it gets to the point of us filing the petition...
So I jumped ahead there.
Really not much question that they owe the money. And so, they will, will call us, and we will calculate the amount that's due, and...
That house on that picture, is that actually one of them in our town?
That's one that we have expended funds on. The front door or window there, I think, is boarded up. And I'm sorry, I don't know the exact address for that. I picked that out of several. I can get the address for it, though.
I just was curious.
But it is one, I think, that we have done mowing and kept up, so to speak, best we After the foreclosure petition is filed, it is served on all the property owners. For those that may be deceased or missing, a warning order attorneys are appointed by the courts, and basically, they will send letters, they will publish names in the newspaper trying to locate anybody that has an interest in these properties to come forward. Usually, after the foreclosure petition is filed, we get a response by, about a third of the people will come forward, and they will actually, you know, make arrangements to pay before the thing will go to the actual sale by the master commissioner. After the petition has been filed, and all of the notices have been given to the various taxpayers, and anybody that has an interest in the property, the lien holders, it is referred to the master commissioner for sale on the courthouse steps. This is a sale that is open to the public. Anybody can come and place a bid on the properties. And, you know, what we hope, a lot of times, in addition to collecting the delinquent taxes, when it comes to the dilapidated properties, we hope that somebody will buy it, get it back on the tax rolls, tear down, you know, any old structures that's there, or take over maintenance of the particular property.
The new owners aren't responsible for the back stuff?
That's taken out of the amount that they pay at the foreclosure sale. Is put on the amounts that paid towards the amounts owed.
So extrapolate that out, what if a piece of property nobody wants to buy, what do you do then?
Well, that's, that happens a lot, and there's occasionally, the city will buy one. But we've paid upwards of a dollar or $2 in the past for a particular property. That's applied to the amounts that it's owed. We ultimately get a deed from the master commissioner on that, and then we will, a lot of times, if we need to do any maintenance or work on the property, we've done that in the past, and then we've also accepted bids, advertised it ourselves, and accepted bids from individuals to purchase the property. Is that, does that answer your...
I was just thinking, you know, if nobody shows up, nobody wants it. It's just stuck there, and it still looks ugly?
Well, that's a...
Our recourse is not to condemn it and just tear it down?
Well, no, we can do that. And a lot of the properties that we have that go to the mass foreclosure have been torn down and...
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at.
I apologize, I should have been...
I didn't ask it right, probably.
...and that, so...
Mayor, if I could add one more thing, and that is too, Steve does a good job of making an announcement before the mass foreclosure sale at the master commissioner's sale, notifying anyone on specific properties, if there is a dilapidated structure, they're put on notice before the sale that they have six months to tear that place down, or face additional fines and repercussions from property maintenance. So for those pieces of property that, that we haven't already taken the house down, everyone's put on notice that they have to either rehabilitate or take that down within six months. And there's usually a few questions about that, and then the sale goes forward, and the properties are purchased. So it's been a great process so far to get some of these properties rehabilitated, or at least on the tax rolls, and holding off until somebody wants to do something with them.
Thank you.
Usually, there's some interest by somebody in the particular properties. Occasionally, we will end up with some of the ones, you know, that are sold, but for the most part, there's somebody that's interested and is willing to do work, either whether it be fixing up an old house that's there, or whether it means tearing one down, and, you know, a lot of times, for example, Habitat for Humanity is a group that will come and bid, or, you know, have some interest in a particular property for some of their projects. But anyway, from start to finish, the process for the mass foreclosure is usually about eight months. From the date that it is filed, everybody is notified, that's required by law to be notified, and then it's ultimately, you know, referred to the master commissioner for sale, and then that sale is approved afterwards by the court. We'd be glad to answer any questions that any of you might, might have in regard to the mass foreclosure.
Do you have any questions? Commissioner Glenn?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we always get this question from the public, so I just kind of wanted on the record from you, Steve.
Certainly.
And that is, are any of these homes occupied at the point that they're going to go up to the master commissioner's sale?
We do, on occasion, have homes that are, they're occupied. The last mass foreclosure that we did, I think we had two that were occupied. And one, I know for sure, they came in the morning of the sale, and they, they paid the amount that they owed. And I would have to double check, but I think the other one did that as well. You know, it's...
So to assure the public, the vast majority of these properties, as you've said, are abandoned.
Exactly.
They're not habitable in many cases.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Of the items, the properties on this year's list, the 40 that you have referenced, how do they break up in terms of geography? Are they pretty evenly distributed across the west, the central part of the city, and the east? Or are they predominantly on my side of town, the east?
They really are all over the town. Now, I'll be honest, we have not narrowed down to 40 at this particular point. We've got a list of properties of, you know, another thing that we normally do is Joe Sublett, who's our code enforcement officer, myself, and Sherry Gerton, my pair of legal, a lot of times, we will go out and kind of investigate and look at these particular properties as well, because, you know, and when it comes to the dilapidated properties, we try to find the ones that are in the worst condition to include, you know, ones that the neighbors are complaining it poses a danger to, you know, kids that may be in the area, that type of thing. But generally, the properties are all over town. There's not any specific location, but that's kind of the way that we do that.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. So, excuse me, who, go ahead, Mr. Commissioner Conder.
Steve, and possibly Bill may be able to answer the question better, but at the end of that process, that eight months, and we, nobody buys the property, nobody buys the building, it's dilapidated, we then, many times, take the buildings down.
That's correct.
Just make it an empty lot, correct? How much, do we have a budget for that scenario, or on an amount, or not? How much do we add?
About $75,000 a year, Commissioner.
And that will cover probably, what, five, maybe six properties, depending on the structure?
It depends on the structure.
Thank you, Mayor.
You have fundraiser, you know, like you beat up those cars and let everybody take a whack at it for $10.
Have a little practice, maybe, for the fire department?
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you.
Item number three, OB KY Project Committee Report, Dr. Fred Reeves and David Johnson, and former Commissioner Candace Brake of A+ Leadership, please.
Thank you. New perspective out here. Mayor thinks, I think, a little brief history before we get moving. The mayor charged us earlier in the fall with putting together an organization, and it's a, it's a partnership with the chamber and our company and the city, to put some focus groups together and find out how we make this city better, the city continues to grow, without spending money. How we find more partners, how we find more assets, how we find better ways to do things. So what we did is we gathered about 15 working in conjunction with the chamber, because they helped us. The hardest part was getting the groups together and scheduling them and finding a place for them. But we met with about 250 people that made up about 15 groups, from ages 14 or 15 to 83 years old. So we got a pretty wide variety of opinions and ideas. From that, and there were sheets and sheets and charts of opinions, we were able to condense those and synthesize, and put them together, and come up under the seven categories that we were letting them speak to. We came up with about 15, 12 to 15 ideas that, when the groups prioritized, that came to the top, with a good, reasonable ideas that could move the city forward. From that, when that process ended, then we moved into putting committees together. There were the implementation committees. So there are seven implementation committees that have already met once. There are about anywhere from nine to 14 members on each committee. What they are doing is they are working to put together recommendations, maybe recommendations for the chamber, maybe recommendations for an outside agency, maybe partners. Some of them will come to you through the city staff, because when we get recommendations, those will go through Mr. Parrish, he'll look at those, he'll vet them, he'll bring those to you or the mayor, and we'll move on from there. But that's sort of where we are in the process of how things work. We just had our first meeting. The committee members we have, just to tell you, they're excited. They see this budget crisis that we and so many other cities are in as an opportunity to do things differently, to think differently, to find solutions. Solutions you don't find when things are going well and they're easy. So the 80 or 95 people we have working now on those committees, they have set up subcommittees. Mr. Parrish is even going to come and make several presentations. Other city staff will be called on to come in, bring them up to speed, get them information they need. But everyone is kind of splintered out and started working on specific projects they think will work. What Dr. Reeves and I are going to do today is we're going to give you an update on the first round of recommendations that we have, and we'll tell you who's chairing those committees. The first committee that we have is community engagement. That community's purpose is to find a way to get more citizens involved in what's going on in Owensboro. The chair is Joe Berry. Their first and only recommendation is being handed off to the chamber, and they have asked that the chamber and the city partner together to put a database and training program together for prospective board members. What we heard over and over again from people is that we don't even know what's out there, and what's out there, we don't know how to get involved. So we thought, what better way than to let the chamber take that charge? They've already gotten started, so the committee's met a week ago, the chamber's already moving forward. Second one was basic public services. Former city policeman Chris Castlin, who now works for the hospital, is chairing that. There are two recommendations. One was that Mr. Parrish come and talk about recycling, because there's a big push for curbside recycling. The second is slowing down traffic on Second Street. And we have some police officers who are on the committee, they're looking into what that takes, what the state would have to play. The third is parks and recreation, which is one of your own. Amanda Rogers is chairing that. Her recommendations are finishing the Green Belt, and we all know we want to do that, and Amanda gave us some information, and some of the committee members talked and thought, and their idea is to give parks and recreation a latitude to go and find ways to raise money, and not take it out of the city's budget. And that's going to include several recommendations that Amanda will make later. And the last thing is, that everyone talked about, is that they do not know what's going on in parks and recreation. When Amanda talks and says, "Here's what we do," and they say, "That's great," didn't know any of what was going on. And then we ask Amanda, "What's your, what's your parks and rec budget for marketing?" It's not very big, but she's spending her money on programming and doing other things. So from that, I'm going to turn it over. Fred's going to, Dr. Reeves is going to give you a little update on the next four.
Sorry, David.
No, I hope you're okay. If you need to leave, feel like you, do whatever you need to do.
I'd feel him, though.
I want to emphasize a comment David made, is that how engaged these people are. It's amazing, you know, they not only came to the meeting, but almost every committee member volunteered to take on an issue as a subcommittee and meet between this meeting and subsequent meetings. So these folks are excited, they're giving their time, and these are top-quality people doing this. These are movers and shakers, they're people that are rising in the community, they're people who really want to do things for the community. So I appreciate that. The first committee I'm going to tell you about is the Finance Committee, and that one's being chaired by Dr. Tom Maddox. Like all of you know Tom, who's one of the most quality people in this community, as far as I'm concerned. This will probably be the most challenging committee, and it's a really strong committee in terms of the membership, but they feel like the first thing they need to do is get an understanding of how the city budgets, what's in the budget, and so forth. So they've invited City Manager Bill Parrish to come to their next meeting, and they're looking, they said, "Give us a 35,000-foot view, and then we'll begin to ask you some questions, get, kind of get down in the weeds with you." They just want, and they will look at this from a more private sector perspective. Understanding, though, that the private sector perspective may not always necessarily be the way you can go, but at least getting a different set of eyes on it. One of the strong members on that committee is former Commissioner Alan Brayden, and so it is, it is a strong, strong committee, and I'm looking forward to working with them. Tourism Committee is chaired by Sim Davenport. Many of you will remember Sim was the Bell South AT&amp;T person in the community for many, many years. Sim is one of the real go-getters. I get about 10 emails a day from Sim about various issues on his committee. The first one that they're going to take on is, it would be nice if we had a mobile welcoming center, maybe a trailer that was, that had package into all the things to do in the city and all the committees. So like, when you have parents that Kentucky Wesleyan College, the mobile center could go out there, and maybe look at volunteers, demand it. At the barbecue festival, we'd have it down here somewhere, so folks can go and see, "What can you do besides go to the barbecue festival while you're in town?" Maybe for, when the riverboats land, because the CBB is really working with the riverboats to do more land here, so the welcoming center would be parked down while the folks come in off the gangplank, stop there and get brochures where they'd like to do so. That was one that we probably will ask to hand off the city. It probably costs a few bucks, but maybe not a bunch of bucks, and we might even find a way to find some bucks to subsidize it, would be our hope. The third group I'm working with is arts, entertainment, and leisure. This is a really kind of what I call the fun one. Lot of young, energetic people on this, and they were, they were just, they were just off the wall with ideas, things to do. They're chaired by Andrew Hired. I don't know if any of you know Andrew, he's a young, he's chaired the Chamber of Young Professionals, works at Independence Bank. What they're, in fact, they've already got one thing done, okay? There was concern about having a master schedule, and you've probably read an article in MNI yesterday about the CBB putting this master schedule. So any nonprofit or organization in town that has an event that is entertainment, that is open to everyone, will put on this, be put on this calendar. Because all of you know, you've been involved with your own nonprofit groups, you'll have something planned on Friday, September the 14th, and you look on the calendar where the three other groups are going to meet the same night. So all of a sudden, now, this won't eliminate all that, because we've got a lot of nonprofits and a lot of things, but at least people will be able to look and say, "I really don't want to compete on that particular date, so I'll pick another date." So that one's already in place. Dave Kirk, who's been a tremendous addition to CBB, is doing that, and I'll say, if you want to get something on there, just call Dave, email Dave, and Dave's going to manage it, okay? You don't get to put your own junk on there, okay? Dave will manage that, make sure it's in there the right way, the right form, and all the information is correct. Final one I reported is transportation. Kirk or Patrick are still in that, and you talk about a live wire, all of us know Kirk real well. We didn't work quite to put Kirk, but we put Kirk anywhere. So we asked Kirk if he would take the transportation group on. That group's first act, action is going to be, their next meeting, they've invited Kevin McLaren from the District Highway Office in Massville to come and speak with them. How many of you have been on the new bridge in Louisville that goes from Indiana to...have you noticed the big decals on the, on the highway there that direct you, and how nice those are? Well, one of the things that we came up with in our committee meetings was, it's hard to find a hospital. Now, you can kind of see it out there, but which lane do you get in to do what? So we're going to see if it's possible on the, on the hospital out there to put those big road decals that says "Hospital" with a arrow that direction, "Hospital, come and cross this lane and get into that lane," and so that we can direct people. You think an elderly person, maybe an 85-year-old wife taking her 87-year-old husband to the hospital, he has a heart attack one night, they don't want to call ambulance, because that's expensive. They pass that exit, and all of a sudden, you know, they're in Hallsville, they don't know how to get back. So we're going to see if it's possible for the state to do that for us, and talk about some other issues around transportation. So those are the committees I've got, and David and I and Candace will be happy to answer any questions, if you have any. But we want to thank you for helping to do this, because this, we think this can make a real difference.
Any comments on the commission? Well, I want to thank you, because I know it's a lot of work, but we got the right people doing it, and looking forward to completion.
Yep, we are too.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, y'all.
Next item on the agenda is city project list, City Manager Bill Parrish, please.
Mayor, as always, we've printed that list and give it to all the members of the commission. Any questions you have on that, we don't plan to brief, but we answer by exception.
Commissioner Pam Smith-Wright.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um, Bill, I had three phone calls from some citizens wondering about the area around Gabe's Tower, of course, and they were talking about, and these are people who live in that area, and they are worried about the transportation being put there.
Mm-hmm.
And they are saying that, you know, it sounds like a good idea because of the space and all of that, but as a person who lives in that area, they are not happy with, with all of that being right there in their neighborhood. So I just, I mean, they just asked me to address that, and that's what I'm doing. I just wanted to convey their feelings about their, their neighborhood.
Mr. Parrish?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. There's no decisions have been made. As a matter of fact, Mayor and I have a meeting next week with the current owner of the tower. No decisions have been made at all. That is an option. It's not an option that we're ready to brief the commission, that that's our recommendation, but it's just one understanding, but I take those comments and understand those comments. Thank you, Commissioner.
Uh-huh. I just, you know, things get out in the air somewhere, and, and, you know, when people call you, they, they're so sure that this is going to happen, and, and, you know, they're just trying to say, "This is our neighborhood." Yeah, okay.
So you're talking about the transit, moving the transit thing?
Yes, yes.
It's my hope that we put that on the tax dollars, tax base, you know? It generates some income from it, so you can share that with them, because that's not what I want to do, is put another government spot there to where we can't generate any income from. Okay. Anybody else?
I've got one, just in general.
Yes, sir.
RWRA, I just want to make sure the policy. I was driving up here, and between Breckenridge and Bolivar, there's a pretty good square cut, which usually, if I'm correct, is RWRA working on a line. Is it our responsibility to fill in those, those gaps, which basically, or is it theirs?
No, it's the utility that makes the cut. It could be electric, could be water, could be RWRA, could even be, could even be cable television, if it's an underground spot, but it's the responsibility of that utility to patch it. Now, the only problem that everyone has in patching right now is the asphalt plant is closed. So what Wayne Shelton is using for our potholes and any cuts we have to make is a temporary cold patch that is nowhere near as effective as the permanent patch, so.
And for the public, if we got a heavy snow or heavy rain, that cold patch would probably be eroded, right? It wouldn't stick?
Generally, does not stand up anywhere near as well. Now, Wayne does a special little something to the cold patch. We actually put it, he actually puts it in a device that heats it on site, but it's still lesser quality material than the hot asphalt you get from the, from the mix.
And so, can we communicate with the groups that have done these, these street cuts to encourage them to fill them in?
We do, and I can, if you have a specific one, I'll call them and ask them to do it, but there are hundreds over town, and generally, the problem is, there's no asphalt to patch it with.
And that opens up what, May?
It depends on the weather, and it depends on projects, but generally, as soon as warm weather gets here, April timeframe, maybe even March, if there's a very large paving project to be done.
Yeah.
Thank you.
They can't wait to sell you the hot mix, they'll open it up as soon as they can. Commissioner Conder? Commissioner Glenn, you finished?
Yeah.
Did you, oh.
If we get out of the way, I could see Commissioner Vaughn.
Trying to lean in there. Just a quick update on the Green Belt East Trail. It says we've got a verbal approval. Does that mean work is proceeding on that?
No, Commissioner, it's, as you, as you recall, it's under the TIF.
Yes.
So we're waiting for TIF funding or alternate funding to fund that.
Okay, thank you.
Your turn.
If it's possible. The parking garage, it reads as if we've come to a conclusion of the signage, yes, the new one, the new one, for what may go on the front of it. Do we have... Do we have a good conception and drawing that we can be able to show the public very soon on what that looks like?
Yes, and I've spoken with each of you to make sure that you're okay with that, and I'm going to give that to Austin right after this meeting.
Thank you, sir. Awesome.
Will you share that with us, Austin, after you get it? Okay, anything else to come from this board today? Hearing none? I'll adjourn.